Kent Norris is on vacation tonight, so he asked me if I would take over the helm. So I'd like to welcome you, and we have all board members present except for Kent. And the consent agenda...oh, thank you. Do we have any comments or a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Public comments. We have Larry Rich here tonight.
Vacation.
He's on vacation. Somewhere where there's no cell service, because I got a text message from his wife when she was in town shopping, she said.
Oh.
He's taking a break. Well deserved.
So Larry Rich, 4590 Northeast Loop Drive, Otis, which is still on the lake. I just wanted to see if things are still progressing with trying to find out who caused the sediment in the canal. You know, I just don't want that to die, because, you know, I mean, a lot of stuff came into the canal, into the lake, and I just don't want it to go away. So that's my question, is it still being pursued?
That is definitely still on our agenda, Larry. Right now, Dave Waltz would be here as our main contact on that project work, and he's out in the Selets for about 13 or 14 days right now, working on the TM Dell project. As soon as he's back from the wilderness, we'll definitely continue. But no, it's definitely on our agenda, and it will remain on action items until we can get a little further with that and get a plan of action.
And I would say that I don't know about trying to find who's responsible for it as much as figuring out what we can do to take care of it is my personal...
I agree, we need to find a way to dredge it out or clear it out.
Right. I mean, I think that, and you've heard me say this, of trying to find a responsible party and hold them accountable, even if they did something wrong, but from what I understand is that all of the Logging Practices Act, and I don't know the exact title of that act, but was followed, as far as we were able to find out from who we contacted, that doesn't mean that, you know, tragedy doesn't happen and a hill gives away. So as far as who's responsible and holding them accountable, personally, and I'm not speaking for the board, but me personally, is not as important to me as figuring out how to get it cleaned up and having a plan of action, whether it's your canal or anybody else's canal, of when this happens, let's get it cleaned up.
Okay, so we're pursuing permits then, possibly to...
That would be my desire.
To get into Thompson Creek, yeah, definitely. That's something that I've been considering as far as what we're, the work we're doing at D River as well, because it seems that'll be very similar work in getting that done, and from really a lot of the same similar reasons. It's just a natural deposition that's coming in, you know, from the mountainside and from the streams, and actually, you know, likely from logging practices, possibly from, you know, other things. But the same processes are putting that there. You can look at the aerial flyovers even on Google Maps and see that even in 10 years, the inundation has been very high, especially in Thompson Creek as compared to some of the other canals. We've even met with some of the folks at Indian Shores, Bob Wolfe, the HOA manager over there, and I know Bill spoke with them as well. They're having the same issue in theirs, and they even have boat activity and things in their canal. And I know we don't have a lot down there in Thompson, it's a lot more quiet water. So you're right, when it does come down Thompson Creek, whether it's natural or unnatural or caused by something, it drops. And I've been out there firsthand and seen that and have been monitoring as well with the XO, just to make sure that we still have good numbers and everything on the water itself. But just long story short, yeah, I think that that potentially, or can be a part of what we're going to do with the D River as far as the sediment removals, to whatever mechanical means we come up with, we should be able to use it there as well.
And I know Kent is still working diligently with Ducks Unlimited to try to figure out something for that area as well, which is a little bit separate issue, but still affects Thompson Creek Canal. What do you call that canal? Thompson Creek Canal?
Thompson Creek Canal.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Thanks for your diligence. Miles?
Miles Schlesinger. I found out at a recent Homeowners Association annual meeting that Pier Point 18 does use nitrogen-free fertilizer, and so that is a good thing. But the president of the Homeowners Association went to a committee meeting and was told that the lily pads are an invasive species and they could be cut out. Then someone else told him that they're not an invasive species, I think Josh did, and so I'm wondering, what can we do to clear our canal where the water comes into the lake and comes down across West Devil's Lake Road and into the lake by our property? And if we can, we would like to clean that canal out of lily pads so that we could launch our canoes and some things in the, from not having to carry them all the way to the front of the lake.
Yes, Josh.
Those are actually not invasive species, everything become overly prolific very easily, and that's what we have, those yellow lilies out there. There's species, common name spatter dock. They're very common here, they've been here for a long time, I'm sure everybody's very familiar with them, they have those really large 24-inch leaves. And because of that, and because of their girth, they have roots that can go five meters into the lake bed, so cutting them kind of controls them a little bit, pulling them out by the rhizome is how you actually remove them. A lot of people manage them because they can become very prolific. Like I said, they're not invasive, but I've got to call into the county extension office just to make certain that we don't have any issues with being able to pull those out. But it's fairly common that people remove those in and around their docks and waterways.
I know that we receive a lot of lily pads at the transfer station, so I know people are managing them in front of their properties. Now whether they should be, I don't know that answer 100 percent. I know you can cut them, no different than you can cut, you know, a weed or whatever. Now pulling the rhizome, I don't know the answer to that.
You can't pull them. You sometimes can put a shovel in and put some pressure on it, and they'll pop up the roots. But I think almost everybody around me kind of cuts them down to leave a path for their boats. So, and I cut the ones in my house, in front of my house too, and I haul, I'm sorry, I haul every, all the leaves into my yard, spread them out and dry them, and they go on the garbage, but it takes, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, they're very heavy, and they're bulky plants. I'll get an official answer, but for the folks that are doing that and harnessing them right now, the only thing I would ask is that you put them on the shoreline or dispose of them, and don't throw them back in the lake, please.
Right, don't throw them in the water.
I agree. Don't throw them in the water.
Do not throw them in the water.
Yeah, if you cut them, take them out of the lake, because you don't want, it's more nutrients that we're feeding the lake if you put them.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, we'll get back to you with an official answer, and at next meeting, maybe we'll make an announcement, because I've noticed this year that people that have lily pads seem to have more lily pads. Maybe people just aren't cutting them as much, but...
Well, I think we'll trim some of them.
Yeah, you have the, you have...
We can get to our canoe area where they can set in the canoes from the land there. The other thing I wanted to mention so that all of you heard is that I have made additional requests of two parties. One party from San Francisco bought a vacation rental group of homes at Glen Eden Beach, and they're moving up here, as they have had experience in vacation rentals, one of the relatives has, in Hawaii, where she operated 70, and lost it in a divorce, and she came back to California with her son, who's graduating from high school next year. But her family is interested in buying Noel's place as an additional business, and as you know, I'm worried about having to carry five-gallon gasoline cans at my old age, so I'd like to have gasoline available, and I think Marina is essential to get any kind of activity on the lake. So I am working diligently on that, and I talked to the business manager at Chinook Tribe at his office Monday, and I think he is somewhat interested, because they built apartments across the lake from Noel.
Cool. I think everybody here agrees that we would love to keep blue heron, blue heron. Whether that's in our capability or not, I think is a different story, but...
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a request on a move on the agenda.
Okay.
Normally, when we appoint new officers for the year, we do it at the beginning of a meeting, and what I'm requesting, that we have that discussion before the committee reports.
Okay, so we're going to move action item of appointment of board officers to, do you want to do that now, before we start on committee reports?
Yes.
I'm fine with that? Everybody else? Okay.
So I'll start the discussion.
Great.
So what I would like to do is make a recommendation that the vice chair move into the chair position, that would be you, Tina, and bring Kathy Kramer on as a vice, and I would like to stay treasurer for the year.
I think that would be good. You've done a great job as treasurer, you know, and Tina has taken over a lot of meetings, so I think that would be a great solution to...
And you're amicable to...
Oh, yeah.
I'll follow in with that as well.
So do you want to make a motion since you are not one of the...
So I'm going to make a motion to elect, yeah, place Tina in the chair position with Kathy Kramer as vice, and continue with Steve as the treasurer for the next year.
There's a motion, is there a second? Actually, I...
I don't think...
Yeah, you, do we need a second? On an election, do you have to have a second? I suppose it wouldn't hurt.
I believe so. Let's go ahead and stick with Roberts rules.
So I'll second it. All, a motion and a second for the slate presented by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Imposed, all right. So there's our new board. I want to make sure that we, yay. Thanks for being willing to serve, and I really want to thank Kent for his leadership that he's given us the past several years. It's been invaluable to bring us to where we're at, and he's going to stay a very active member of our committee, so I am not, I'm not concerned about that, but I do appreciate his leadership and the time he's spent on it, so.
I'll second that one.
And if something happens, I am not running the office, just so you know. Sewer Committee, I don't think, have we had any dissolution resolution?
Nothing yet. I've asked Brian a couple times, and he may be tied up. I know he's busy with his law practice and travel, so we'll get with him again.
So for those of you who maybe weren't here last month, Brian presented basically a final report of the committee, but we were looking for a...
Final resolu, he presented us with the resolution to dissolve, but we didn't get his final report.
Sorry, I said the opposite of what I was trying to say, thank you. So we, before we dissolved, voted to dissolve, we requested the final report and recommendation to move into a community committee, or whatever they want to call it, to explore the idea of forming a sewer district. So he was going to put that together, and we were hoping to have that at this meeting, but it sounds like he didn't quite get that done. So that, that's the, and it's not the end of the world, because until he has time, he has agreed to spearhead the community committee to explore a sewer district. So that's where we are at with the sewer committee. So special projects and events and communications.
And a good evening to the ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Sexton and two as well. My name is Tom Rice, I'm here representing the Special Projects, Events and Communications Committee, also known as the committee that has the most fun and gets the most done. And what we got done in the past month was our water safety clinic, which we held on the 22nd of June at Regatta Park. I would say it was a success. Deputies Lopez and Doritys were their usual helpful, friendly, knowledgeable selves. I believe they inspected seven boats at Regatta, seven big boats, and I think it was three or four personal watercraft. They did say, I think they inspected 22 over at Brown Bear Park as they were launching their boat. So we got a lot of boats looked at. They gave tours of their boat to kids that came down, it was neat, I think. We gave away a lot of literature and whistles, and it was very well done. They also added that they are going to, they have access to some life jackets within their realm that they work in, that they're going to donate to our life jacket stands on the lake, which is really nice. So it'd be good to look forward to that.
Hey, Tom, I just wanted to, because I see in Georgia here, thank you for all the work that you had done on that, the press release and everything. From a public service standpoint, on the radio, the commercial was outstanding, I heard it several times, and I personally wanted to thank you for doing that.
Yes, it was well-publicized, I think, and we were on the same day as the kite festival, and I don't know if that was, I think it was beneficial. I think we actually had more people come down to Regatta that had come into town. And as an aside, I will say there was two families from up in the, I think Renton, Washington area. They had a black Sprinter, big camper van, and they were staying in Tillamook, but they came down for the kite fest, and they ended up at Regatta. And I was talking to a couple of the parents, they said, "This is the coolest lake, why have I not ever heard of this?" And so always can get the word out better than we have, I think, so. At the conclusion of the water safety event, we had a catered lunch that was provided to the volunteers, and we were blessed with excellent weather, and it went very well. So I think, look forward to the event next year.
Did they extend the same no citation at Brown Bear as they did at Regatta Grounds?
I don't know that for sure.
I still want people to get mad at us for having them, you know, at the lake.
Right.
And them not extending the same grace on one side as they did the other.
I was going to say, I don't think our committee can take credit for the 22 inspections that were done over there, although maybe they wouldn't have happened if we weren't having our safety clinic.
Well, yeah, they probably wouldn't have been on the lake that day, so.
Right, exactly. So that was good. But we had a lot of people come by, a lot of, and we talked to people, talked about water safety, talked about the lake, so it was a good event.
Tom, one of the things that got brought up to me by my son the other day is he frequently rides his jet ski in the ocean, and then comes home and runs a hose through it, and his buddy was like, "Why don't you just take it down the lake and run it on the lake?" And anyhow, so we had a little discussion with him about mixing organisms and so on and so forth, so I, is that something that, it made me think of that clatter, that event? Is that something that we ever talk about is...
Invasive species permit, they do talk about that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because I think we have a lot of people here that use their jet skis in the ocean and then bring them into the lake, so.
Right. I think a lot of, I know, yeah, I know over at the county ramp on Sandpoint, a lot of people, if they've had their boat in Selets Bay or somewhere, they'll take them over there and just run them on the trailer to run the salt out of it. And so a species could be an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Our committee also, I know Mr. Rich, because I saw him, and Clyde Earl as well, patrolled at least the north end of the lake on the 5th of July after the big fireworks show on the night of the 3rd, and everybody's personal shows on the 4th, looking for fireworks debris. They really found none, but we took a look, and that was a good thing, I think, so.
We went out on the 5th and did almost the whole perimeter of the lake, this super slow.
Yeah.
And I thought it looked terrific.
Yeah, we didn't find a single bottle rocket stick or anything, so that was good. And I guess our next event for our committee will be the West Devil's Lake Road cleanup the week after Labor Day. But until then, I think that takes care of our responsibilities. I do see we have an action item under Special Projects for the July 3rd fireworks show and boat parade. Kind of falls under the DLNA, but I'm on the board of that as well. I'll just mention, we did participate in both of those events. I thought the fireworks show was as fantastic as always, was excellent. The boat parade was great, and thanks to the suggestion from Mr. Brown, we went the opposite direction, which was a real good idea, because as the parade goes, people will kind of fall out, you know, they've been going for an hour, they go home, and a lot of times people traditionally toward the tail end of that loop don't get to see the whole parade. So this time we went the other way around.
Oh.
I think a great idea would be to alternate from this point forward.
Yeah.
Just so everybody gets to see as much as they can. But it was fun, I think everybody had a good time, lots of decorated boats, just adds to the fun of living on the lake. Any questions?
I thought the fireworks this year were the best ones yet.
We thought so too.
I agree.
Yeah, they get better every year.
Yeah. There was no woes, it was the right time length, there was great big ones, pretty ones, and the finale was phenomenal.
It was, and a good fireworks show, you always think, "This is the finale." No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
This is it, no, it wasn't. And then when they finally had it, it was spectacular.
Yeah.
It really was.
I thought they did a really nice job.
They did, it was excellent. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Save our shoreline water monitoring. Oh, here she comes.
All right, we didn't meet today, but I did give Jed a call, and he was calling everyone the end of June, and I'm assuming that that was taken care of. He may not have collected all the checks, but Kathy, did you get a call from Jed?
No, I didn't. I had called him a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
And I keep meaning to stop by the bank, and I forget.
Right, yeah, I dropped mine off before we left, so, so I'm paid, but Larry didn't even know I was buying one. So if anyone wants to put their name in for another floating garden, and I recommend the 4x4, the half-size, it's Jed Fly at the Oregon Coast Bank, 541-669-1200. He answers that. Let's see, Kent has the, his finger on the pulse for the shoreline restoration projects. We've got three people, maybe two now, I'm not sure the third one has responded, but he'll update us on that. Let's see, what else? Our proposed March workshop is on aquaponics, if I get to the Cub Scout meeting. He hasn't told me when he's having that aquaponics speaker, so I'll get that done. And Josh, you were going to try to contact Susan?
Yes, I actually emailed her this week, and I haven't heard back yet, so she may be out for holidays, so.
Might be on vacation, right. Okay, so we'll try to get the western pond turtle training for spotting western pond turtles. And any questions?
I do have a question. I brought my husband over on the jet ski to see your garden the other night, because ours is still sitting up on the shore.
Okay.
And he, where do we get those plants?
Some of them I got at Brown Bear, some I got at Blake's.
Okay.
As water, but then I got a lot at Bill and Julie's, the grasses.
Okay.
And then one of our committee members brought some from his pond also, of grasses that were on the edges, the ends.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just trimmed those just the other day, because they were getting a little gangly and putting up sprouts.
Okay.
So we're trying to keep them controlled and have most of it in the root system.
Okay.
So that's the aim, so.
Yeah, we did a little follow-up on ours as far as thinning out. All of our pots were just overpacked with roots and...
Isn't amazing.
And growth, so we took them apart, separated everything, made new plants, and filled in some baskets that weren't doing very good.
Yeah.
And then supplemented the ones that didn't do too well at all with new species, so that's grown good.
And I had a lot of weeds where I have the yellow, or the white pond lilies, the flat ones, not those ugly, yellow ones, the flat ones in the corners, and just, they just love getting in there, the weeds. So we pulled those out too, but it's an ongoing, if you want to keep it nice and neat, but weeds also do a good thing, so.
Yeah.
Any questions? Nothing, nothing? Okay.
Good.
Thanks.
Thanks, babe. All right, Josh, District Projects and Operations?
Oh, my favorite part of the evening. Everything has been pretty easy this past 30 days or so in the district. The aeration system's been firing off great, only had one shutdown during, you know, one of the blackouts or brownouts, or whatever you want to call it. It cycles right back up, that's the third time I think I've restarted, just since it's been installed since November, so pretty awesome. We've only had a combined 36 hours of downtime, maybe over three shutdown events, and we don't even have telemetry on it. So if we want to get right down to the minute or hour, we can set that up, and I can run out in my bathrobe or whatever and hit the switch. But at any rate, long story short, that thing has been running as well as we could have hoped. So I've been out on the lake, and I've done a lot of observation around the diffusers. Everything seems to be operating fine, all the lift and everything John's described to us as far as the operation of the system, and the movement of the water looks good. Compressor is still whisper quiet, I think it's actually gotten quieter. I don't know if Bill's work has settled in, in the joists, or if the compressor has just broken itself in, but it's extremely quiet over there, so we don't really have any concerns from that anymore. Water itself has been great inside and outside of the field. Alex and I have been testing with the XO at least weekly, and the DOs are still above 100.
Really?
500 yards north and 500 yards south, and in the central part of the array, so we've covered a huge area there. In addition, the algae that we've seen this year stuck around quite a, quite a bit less time than it generally does normally. We have that one green bloom that's a good couple weeks, you know, it sticks around and can kind of get thick. This year, it looked like it was here a week and a half, maybe two tops, and then it went brown and hit the bottom, and there's still some free-floating stuff out there. And I spoke with Bill earlier today, and he's seen some out there working as well, but it seems kind of unconglomerated, and it's not, it doesn't seem to be lake-wide as it has been before. So it looks like we've gotten a major reduction in just the amount of free-floating algae we have right now. The chemistry looks great, pHs are spot-on, about 7.4, 7.5, top and bottom. Like I said, DOs are wonderful, and we're, now I'm kind of looking back through some of the past day that we've collected from our algae sensor to see, you know, what it was looking like the past 18 months or so. I wish we would have had that, you know, 10 years ago, but it's interesting to see all the data come together right now. But as far as the chemistry is concerned, it's outstanding. In addition, the bacteria levels have been lower, even in our tributaries, but definitely in lake, they seem to be lower this year than they even were last year, especially over the last two years, so that's great news as well.
One question, Josh, when you're monitoring that, is there any chance that we can get a couple of readings in some of the shallower canals?
I am taking those right now. I, I, I am taking those right now. Um, I have them, I, I generally get up to Thompson and take one right up there between Kathy and, uh, Mary and Larry's place. Um, especially when I go to sample the bacteria as well, so I've been getting those. Uh, I usually pop one down there by Vivian's at the D River as well as an outlet. Um, but I'm trying to expand on that as much time as I've gotten, as the weather allows, uh, jumping out and, and just taking that everywhere. And I've been doing that since it came on as well, so we do have some baselines for a few months ago where it's not as regular, cause I would love to be able to, you know, spend three days in the lake and just sampling 50 points every week. But, um, I grab them when I can, when I'm out, since that thing takes such a quick sample, so we do have some of that to, to rely on the past.
Just wondering about, um, some kind of, um, monitoring of Indian Shores Canal, just so that they're, they're included in the monitoring process.
Oh, I can, I can add a point in and, and definitely get back in there as time allows, that's not a problem.
Saying where by their dock, their floating dock system would probably be sufficient?
Yeah, we can get back.
Close to the state park too, so that would be beneficial for them as well. They're by the state parks anyway.
Yeah, and, and we, I mean, we do our bacterial down there by the state parks and things too, and then we, like I said, we get the XO as much as we can. In addition to the, the field sampling too, the, um, depth and, uh, surface samples we take for the aeration, so. Um, but no, um, I, along those lines, some of the shallow areas, Horseshoe Bay, which is the first place that we put the Airstream Pro, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. It's still extremely clean, uh, great water, I've been taking the pHs and everything there with the XO as well the past few years, and it has not reverted at all. And if anything, it's stabilized in that shallower water in that area. I know we have a lot of varying weather and different factors here on the lake as far as how those things travel and temperatures, but, um, I'd say that's a pretty good win right there, so.
Pretty far away from the Airstream too.
Yeah, yeah, that's well out of our range, I mean, that's the tippy-top of lake, so. Doing good.
Still see the bottom at our place, which we've never been able to see the bottom of the lake. And we have lots of clams and.
There's been a lot of clams, and oddly enough, I've gotten a few calls, now that the water has cleared up, and the bottom's starting to clear, they're like, there's, there's things on the bottom, can you come clean this stuff? It's like, I can't, and I, I, maybe.
It's funny, because our kids have been collecting, we have a lineup of old bottles and stuff that they can see now when they're out playing, and so.
Those Watkins opium bottles.
Old Pepsi bottles, and it's funny.
Yeah. Um, any more questions on, oh, uh, lake bottom system? John will be coming out, I just spoke with him yesterday, uh, he's putting out 40 miles of line somewhere right now on some huge project in Vermont. Um, another even bigger lake, so, you know, great, great that he's getting around and, and sharing these solutions with some other places as well, as well, cause it, it keeps getting, uh, keeps getting bigger as a problem.
So Josh, I had, um, I think I know the answer to this, but I had a couple of residents ask me if we are gonna ever consider expanding the aeration system. And I told them that the plan was, is to, you know, see if this is working.
Yeah.
And, and that we thought we might get improved water even in the, the forks that don't have, um, diffusers in it.
Yeah.
And so, um, do we have a, you know, a plan of like, yes, this is doing the job, or, boy, we would get better if we did add some diffusers up there?
Generally, I think you wanna give something, even though we've been experiencing some rapid shifts in water quality to the positive. You, you will wanna wait probably two to three years at least before you would go and do another, you know, lake-wide type system. However, I would say that as far as an option, especially for some of these canals, things like Indian Shores and some of these other people, they may approach the contractor directly through their HOAs. Uh, and see what they can do as far as getting an Airstream Pro and having these things under their control, because they've, um, you know, the, the regulatory hurdles are minimal, um, that we've ran into. So an HOA can probably pass many or most of those on their own. Um, our funding is so limited that it would take us amount of time to build up enough funding and/or find the funding through grants and otherwise to get more of those. However, if it's those pockets, you know, in some of those canals, and they would rather have something done sooner than later, um, I would say, yeah, to contract distributors and, and contact us as a district to get that information.
But that we built this system to be able to add on to?
We can.
It is not maxed out?
Our particular system, we can add six more diffusers on, five more diffusers on if we would like.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's not a huge, you know, issue to get a little more expandability out of it. Now, if we, if what you're saying is more to, um, say the Ni'utsu type area, that big finger of the lake, we're just not getting the type of results we want, but we are getting the other parts of the lake. The, the system is sized and financially feasible enough that within a year or so, the district could acquire enough funding and hopefully enough stakeholder support and grant funding as well to just put another system in, just like we did at Sandpoint.
Replicate what we've done.
You know, approximately $150,000, $200,000 per modular unit per approximately 30 diffusers or so.
Okay.
Is, you know, a heck of a bargain if, if we had this much appreciable benefit like we're having, and it's truly, you know, parallel to that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and talking with the contractor, um, lately, he's been also trying to develop homeowner systems. So that it's not a, a major expense to the homeowner, to whereas two homeowners can buy a smaller system and do the same thing.
In front of their.
Just a smaller scale of what we have right now.
It's one reason I really liked his, you know, his business model, he's got the provenance, he's had the, the science follow him around and, and proven, and now he's just trying to get it out to people and see where it works. And I'm sure it's not a solution for everyone, but it, it certainly appears to be positive for our water quality at this point.
Oh, for sure. Thanks.
Yep. Um, but he'll be down late July, early August, he's, he's still giving me a date.
And did we get the, um, is that the next thing?
Oil compressor oil and, um, diffusers. I have not seen them yet, so I don't know if that's came into, if, um, Bill, I don't know if you and Julie, or is he shipping that to your, to the shop?
City was going to ship it, along with the motor, and I did get the motor for the new Airstream, uh, unit. That's being put on, or assembled right now, or one capacitor short, so, um, uh, he's gonna contact the company in Italy and make sure that, um, we don't need a brand-new one, or if we do, that, that they need to send us one, so.
Okay.
What's the capacitor?
It's just a small electrical connection that goes out of the water.
Oh, okay.
And it regulates, um, regulates some of the electrical current.
That's what you put in your trunk with a subwoofer to give it more thump.
Back, back to the future, you know?
Yeah.
Capacitor.
Yeah.
Electronic.
I'll be the dummy that asks the question. I know everybody's thinking it.
Um, the video project is going good, I got the cameras refreshed, everything's still operational down at Vivian's. Uh, still looking at internet options at the moment, but everyone has kind of went, uh, poof, for the summer, so that's one of our lower priority projects. I've been, um, coming back to it as time allows to see what we can do, so. I'm still, still trying to talk some people into letting us put that camera up north. But, uh, still on the agenda. The Airstream Pro, uh, Bill just gave us a quick update on, it's been out of service for almost a few weeks anyway. Um, because the main drive motor took a big log while it was hooked up operating. Uh, the new motor's in, and he said it's at the shop and we're getting it installed at the moment, so we're, we'll hopefully have that back in the water sometime in the next 30 days, so.
Cool.
Um, and we're looking at, I was just talking with Bill this evening about, uh, our next spot. I know we wanted to get it over to Crystal Lagoon, um, where we'd had some, some folks volunteer and/or even maybe Indian Shores, but now during the summer, we really have to keep an eye on the water levels, cause we need a good, you know, 48 inches, 50, 55 for that thing to operate in safely. So we've gotta make sure that we've, you know, got the right spot for it as well, but we do have.
The lake level currently?
Four. Yeah, yeah, so we're not low, but we're dropping down for the summer.
I was half, half expected it to come up a bump with the, the little showers that we had the day before yesterday, but it didn't, didn't budge at all.
I was excited, it said .15, and then the line moved over and it said .05. Not that much, so, no luck. Um, but we'll get that back in the water very soon, um, and get it operating. It, it seems to be, uh, working extremely well for us in the shallower spots, so. Um, the D River and Devils Lake Flood Protection Project is chugging along. Um, I got the proposal from Civil West Engineering on the stream survey in the D River, uh, which will give us, uh, volume measurements, it'll give us cross-sections, uh, start and stop points, and a full survey as to when and where. We could actually do removal, fill, put shovels in the ground, equipment, whatever, um, to tie into a permit. I think the cost was approximately $9,000 on that proposal. I would recommend, uh, that the district have that done, so we have that information, that's gonna be invaluable for us even as archive records as we move forward.
Did we not approve that last meeting?
Um, I don't think we approved it, cause I hadn't had the final numbers yet on the, on the proposal. He had said, uh, it might be this much, but he said it'll be approximately $9,000.
So are you looking for approval on that tonight?
Yes, if we can, please.
So, um, did you send that out? I thought I seen it in my mailbox, so, um, just a technical issue, do you have it? Uh, so, the exact.
Is it in this packet?
I have a hard time with a motion eight to nine or whatever, uh, cause I know you did have, uh.
Yeah, give me.
An invoice, uh, you know, I guess, anytime we approve that, we should probably, uh, have it in our packet.
Do you have it with you, Josh?
Um, I do not have the proposal with me.
Okay.
I've got it here in my email.
I'm trying to see if I can find it in my.
Seemed like just after the meeting, uh, it, you know, I manage five email accounts unfortunately, and I can't remember, but I thought, uh, after the meeting, we actually saw the document, but I.
Was it with the Friday update? No.
Uh, shoot. I guess the other, uh, reason was, is because you had stated, uh, in the last meeting, um, one amount, and it was over the amount that, uh, we had talked about at the last meeting. Uh, I guess I'm looking in the minutes.
Wait, if I have it, I deleted it.
Well, I've got the proposal here, just.
Oh, you found it?
On email times, um, okay, Engineering Services. Um, sorry, 8468.
Eighty-four.
Was the total, 8468 on that. And I do have that proposal, it's not very long here on my phone, if anybody would like to.
Can you kinda, uh, there was a scope of work that was on there?
Sure.
If I remember.
Uh, the field survey will be performed in approximately 25-foot grid pattern. Any rock-out, cropping, or other unique features that exist in between, the 25-foot spacing will be captured. Existing dams, natural and man-made will be located, elevations attained. We anticipate one man surveyor who will come prepared with waders. Um, the field information will be transferred in the following deliverables, plan and profile sheets at 50-foot increments, approximately nine profiles created across the river. Estimated quantity of material buildup as well. Uh, work not included, acquisition of boat, they didn't need that, since there's so much sand that built up there, they, they, they can walk it. Um, agency fees and costs and access permissions associated with the work, um, there are none of those. Uh, formal written report, narrative or analysis, we're not asking them for a formal written report, we're asking them for technical information. I think he has the breakdown here, the field survey at 4808, profiles and volumes at 2660, and reimbursable is at a thousand.
Okay, I, I knew I had seen it, but, uh, just, you know, I, I, if I'm gonna get something, I want the exact dollar amount, so. Uh, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve that work and, uh, get it started. Uh, the timeframe, I think you said, was about three weeks?
Um, I think I spoke to Kevin last time and probably a week, so.
Great.
Uh, in the amount of 8468.
Motion made and approved to approve the Civil West, um, what are we calling this one?
Uh, the Stream Survey.
Stream Survey, and, uh, for 8468 and zero cents, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so yeah, we can get them to work on that and then. So, uh, Josh, just a little timeline talk. We get that done, we have the lamp ray, uh, survey next Tuesday.
Yep, Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
And then what?
Um, I will start putting that information into a permit, a conversation with the Army Corps, who are the people in charge of removal and fill. Um, tell them what we've got. Hopefully by then also I'll have an actual engineering solution, uh, from a marine company or something that we've put together within the district to put into that permit, because they're gonna wanna know how we plan to remove it. Um, you know, where we're gonna set pipes up, where we're gonna sluice material. Um, so it's just one more component of, you know, of all those things come together in the permit, and then get it in front of them and see what they say.
Okay.
Any more discussion with the city on, uh, help?
Uh, yes, I have been, uh, uh, trying to get up with Lila this past, uh, couple of weeks, and she's been really busy, had a lot of things going on. Uh, but I am waiting on a response from her to get a meeting date, uh, to talk about whatever we can do to work together. Uh, do things like keep the channels open, um, work on the First and Third Street canal situation, uh, some kind of regular maintenance of the, the woody debris and, and everything down there. Because our, as everyone knows, our funding is very limited and those logs are very heavy. Um, so none of that stuff is cheap to move or remove, and it's a regular activity in our, our lake and channel, so, um, that's, and that's part of all this effort is to get, uh, the D River Channel back into a maintenanceable state, um, which it should be in as a waterway, and was, has always been managed as, so.
Great.
That will be the next, the next steps there, so moving forward, um, you know, between the Fish and Wildlife Concerns, the engineering, um, and collecting the information for the permit.
Good.
Um, water quality briefing, I think that we briefly kinda covered that. Um, the only other thing that I would like to speak to in that is, um, we've seen a lot more vegetating, vegetative material on the bottom of the lake. Um, so, anyone who wants to collect a sample of that, put it in a jar, and put it in a baggie or something, email me, or drop it by my office and leave it outside the door, and text me and tell me it's there. I can take any of those samples and get those overnighted for, you know, 30 or 40 bucks to Rich Miller at PSU, who's been IDing that stuff for us for free, so I would, I'd rather get it in a jar or in a bag or something, and get it in the mail and have him give us a positive ID if it's something that's not readily identifiable, like the five-foot wide yellow flowers, so. Um, yeah, some of the smaller algies and things like that, I think it's important that we try and keep up. So if you see something weird or whatever, you know, more information is better, and get hold of me.
Well, the sooner we get it identified, uh, too, because, you know, with the carp numbers, uh, going down, uh, I know right around my home, I'm seeing a different type of growth that I've never really seen in the lake before. And so many of these invasive weeds in lakes, uh, once they start to go, they go quick, and, you know, I've always, uh, thought this board should be proactive and have a plan before it happens, cause it's not if, it's when it, when it is, that we're gonna have to control it.
And this stuff happens all the time, exactly like Steve's saying, last year alone, I know at least once, state parks went out and eradicated a bunch of parrot feather that was growing irrigation itches that's next to our lake. You know, so we need to really, really stay on top of some of those things as, as much as possible.
Well, and need to, uh, you know, extend it to the public, if they see something, um, put it in a jar and get it to us so that we can get it identified.
Yeah, and that's something that I'm going to, um, have Alex work on too, as, uh, as she's helping around the office get a few outreach things together, especially, um, getting some more native species identification, some more invasive species stuff out, as I know we've just put out this first newsletter, and it was a little cursory in the amount of information, but as we move through and get some suggestions, um, I think that that's gonna be a really good avenue for us to try and get this information out, cause a lot of, a lot of times, people simply don't know, it's a pretty flower, or it's whatever, or anything like that, so.
Cool.
Uh, we do have the buoys, those, those have been in for a while, thanks, uh, thank you, Bill, for getting those put in. We had them in before July 4th, and I heard of no fatalities in jet skis in the bottom part of Devils Lake, so we were in good shape there.
We noticed the other night when we were out, um, that house that was falling into the lake for years, I don't know where that's, um, what that portion is. There's a new tree that has fallen in that is just barely under the water. And Lonnie mentioned to me, he's like, have you guys ever thought of like marking areas like that where, you know, there's something just under the surface of the water that doesn't look like it has any. anything under the surface?" So, um...
Stacy's.
Yeah, yeah. And that, uh, that's probably what, like...
Cemetery, I believe.
Yeah, close to the cemetery. Um, anyhow, I... Do we have a plan to, if we see something, can we just stick something on a buoy there? Or what, what is our procedure for that?
I mean, I think you can, there's always some liability associated with, with putting something out there because you're marking something if you mark it, and they're like, "Oh, you know, I, I hit this part of it."
You knew it was there.
"You didn't mark that part of it, and it was there."
Yeah.
So, that's why we stick with the State Marine Board permitting process and, and getting the forty-eight inch high expensive, you know, type of these things, just because they've put that out as guidance, as this is what you can mark something with. Um, unfortunately, that's just one of those things we have to kinda keep an eye on. Maybe at some point we might have funding or have ability to, to move those things out of the way, but there is a lot out there. I mean, you know, as well as I do, there, there are a lot of water hazards underneath, not, not quite as many as some other lakes, but we have a lot of woody debris, um, and things to look out for under there, so...
Okay.
I don't think we could, I don't think we could feasibly probably...
I did talk to the marine deputies about that, and the fact that we did mark out the, the Sand Island part, and they, uh, they told me that they may have a few extra buoys that would be available. If we would contact them, they could bring us up one.
Hey, let's take them.
Or two.
Those things are like four hundred dollars each.
Yeah, there, there's, uh, buoys that they have on hand in their surplus.
Well, and maybe if they put them out, then we're off the hook.
There you go. You guys have the permit, put your number on them.
We all know where those buoys came from.
Yeah. Are they regulation?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Okay. I said that in a public meeting.
Yeah, so, we're all good. We're, um, you know, moving forward on, on that as well, so between that and, uh, life jacket stations, and I know, uh, you all have mentioned the deputies are, are really helping us out with some stuff too, and they've offered to give us extra life jackets and stuff, so it's cool to see them, um, you know, step in and get around the lake a little bit in war too. They've got a lot of territory to take care of, so...
I didn't think the lake was overcrowded over the holiday, either the third or fourth or over the weekend. I thought, I mean, it didn't seem, there's been times where it's like, "I won't let my kids go out," um, but I didn't think it was bad at all.
Yeah. It was steady, it was busy, but it was...
It was steady, and I mean, sure, there was lots of activity, but it wasn't crazy.
No, no. We got a lot of good, uh, stirring from the top, which is good, so... We're set. Um, excuse me. I already briefly mentioned, uh, bacterial sampling has been good so far, everything's been in the green. Um, we've even had good numbers coming in, well, not good numbers, but our, our other samples, uh, further upstream, um, seem to be a little more reduced as well, so it's good to see that. But everything in the lake has been outstanding this year compared to the past two years. And I think that's, I think that's all that I've got to talk about, unless anybody has more questions.
Nope.
Ooh.
Um, under new business, we have John Tucci still planning on coming, you touched on that already, Bill?
Yeah, we, we've left that on the, on the action item until he gives me, um, the date.
And we moved the board officers. Uh, non-agenda items, um, Regatta Park food vendor and deed restriction removal?
I have not gotten...
I was reading on that since our last one, right?
Yeah, I've gotten no update since the last one, so it's on there. Last I heard, July-ish was when the city was planning on having it removed, so, um, hopefully.
Okay.
Um, but we'll get an update. I don't know, Miles, have you heard anything on the, on the deed restriction?
I don't see Miles. Oh, there he is. Sorry, I didn't mean to catch you by surprise. You looked like you were paying attention. The, the deed restriction for Regatta Park, have you heard any update on that?
The last time I asked him was this year, and, uh, he didn't know anything other than they had, uh, got more relatives than the ones that we now hate.
Oh.
Can of worms.
Yeah.
But, uh, thank the city for opening that one, yeah. Cleaning up.
Okay.
Thanks, Miles.
And emergency planning?
Um, I've been in contact with Ken Murphy, the new emergency planner for Lincoln City, about the ownership of the lake and bottom and banks and rivers and canals and everything, because it seems that everyone has some different opinion of who owns what and who controls what. Um, that's part of what I'm sorting out with him right now, um, and then that will at least give us some baser information as to what, what agencies to contact, uh, if we wanna put any, you know, anything in the water, if we have any issues, or, or even, you know, at this point, who do we report something else to? Um, 'cause a lot of people don't even know that, and given the, um, confusing provenance of whom owns what in a waterway in the state, um, we're gonna have to figure that out.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Does anybody have any comments on non-agenda items or any other comments? Do you wanna come up, Larry? Oh, here she comes. Hi, Georgia.
Georgia Roloff, in reference to the parade on the third of July, um, I think it's, uh, kind of an interesting idea to alternate the direction. Um, however, being a resident of the lower third of the lake, uh, could we make sure that the deputies understand that we'd like them to come down a little further towards, say, the state park that's, you know, past Indian Shores down there, because it's a great parade, and it's wonderful to see that police boat go by within, you know, honking its horn. Um, it's, uh, a great opportunity to see that, and, and the boats look wonderful. So, uh, if he could be instructed that we'd like him to cover the whole lake rather than Regatta Park north.
Uh, my only concern there would be trying to get that many boats and keep them away from Sand Island. Is it...
Oh, yeah.
There's plenty of room? Okay. I, yeah, I have no issue with...
Yeah, that's a simple request, and the route, the route was changed by, um, request.
Right.
Uh, so, yeah, as long as it's known beforehand, as long as they're, they know or aware of that, that they'll take any route that, that we would like them to take.
Okay.
It's just they, they're on a, a time limit, so, and also with the fireworks thing, um, it's always set for a one hour, and when, possibly if you did expand the route, it would take longer than that, so whether or not that's within the realm, we'll have to find out, but it's sure a viable request for sure.
Well, and I think it's getting better each year. I know, I remember the first year, we were on our way to the boat parade, which was supposed to start at a certain time, and they were way down the lake already. It's like, wait a second, and each year it seems to get better, and so, you know, we'll just keep refining it and getting it more organized.
Yeah, that's one of the things, um, as a coordinator of that, uh, parade, as, one of the coordinators of the parade is communication with the sheriff deputies. Otherwise, they will continue to do what they did the last year. Otherwise, you have to make a special request, and they will abide, oblige your request, so...
Well, I must advance, uh, admit that this year, we kind of thought they'd forgotten about us entirely, because we're so accustomed for them going south from Regatta Park, and we heard the whistle and the horn, and then we saw nothing.
Oh, yeah.
And we thought, "Oh, they've forgotten about us entirely," or the parade is half as long as it was, so I, I think it's a great idea to go back, you know, one direction one time and then opposite the next. Uh, we, we just know better this time.
Right. I think they did, um, they did make the return loop at Indian Shores.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we specify that.
And we'll be wiser next year. Thank you.
Next year, it's gonna come your way.
Right. And we can go in early.
All right, Larry, did you have something you wanted to add? Eight o'clock. Right? Eight o'clock?
Hold on, let me look.
That's what I have on my calendar.
You ask for volunteers, you're gonna have a lot of people down in D River.
You're gonna have a lot of people, 'cause I've had people coming into my office asking about it.
Oh, my geez, really?
It's kinda exciting.
Nobody's seen a lamp?
I'm out of town, or I would be there.
Don't know what it looks like?
Nah.
I wanna see it shocked.
Yeah, I think, I think we have eight as a start time. I've got a, a conference call with everybody Monday morning at ODFW, um, to line it out, so if there's any changes, I'll, I'll just tell everybody somehow.
Yeah, just shoot it.
Yeah, yeah, it's the website, the email, the, uh, the website.
The event of the year.
Yeah.
All right, anything else to add?
Uh, yeah, I, just, uh, Josh, for next meeting, uh, can you look at the action item under the sewer committee?
Sure.
And can we, uh, refine that so that there's no confusion? Uh, it says present, presentation of resolution to dissolve the sewer committee. I think what we need to do is presentation of final report along with, uh, the resolution to dissolve.
The solution resolution.
And the reason why we asked, uh, for that final report is, is the resolution stated in it that it needed a final report, and we had no final report. So, if you could just clarify that. Uh, and then, I guess the other thing, uh, that I would say is, you know, as a board, we need to continually look at, uh, this new format of agenda. Um, last week I had, uh, heard, and I heard it again this week, and it'd be something to, to work on, that you're reporting the water quality before you get to it, and so maybe one of those topics, uh, anytime you find that, when you say, "I already said that earlier," then let's see if we can simplify it and get rid of one of them, I guess, would be, um, my recommendation. Uh, but I do like the way we're keeping things on the table and not dropping them. Uh, and the action items don't have to be reported on unless they're gonna come off at some point. It's a to-do list, so... Thank you.
Um, with that, I, I think that, um, the Thompson Creek issue should be added as an action item, um, specifically, um, under projects and operations, I'm assuming?
Yes.
With, um, yeah, we're, like, probably right after the D River, Devil's Lake flood protection, somewhere in there, it makes sense to talk about both of those if we're, um...
That's a good point.
And then, um, yeah, Miles, we'll get back to you on the lily pad thing, 'cause we do it, we cut them, but I've never asked permission, so, it's just not my style. All right? Anything else?
I have a question for the intern. So, Alex, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to get an overview of kind of like, um, what you've, what you've gotten out of the district in your brief time here with water testing and whatnot, and, um, just to kinda let us know, um, if you feel that you, the direction that is taking you is, is something beneficial to your, um, career, or some of the, um, action items or directions that you'd like to go with the, the knowledge and experience that you've had here. And the other thing is, um, what, if anything, do you think, um, you could say that would, um, so we could get feedback of, um, what we could do to, to maybe make it better for you, or, uh, the next intern that comes aboard, just for, um, future knowledge?
That's a lot.
Just a general overview.
Um, yeah, so I guess my, in my brief time here, um, well, over the last couple of months, I have learned an immense amount about administration and public communication and outreach, and how important it is. I've learned Josh does an excellent job with that, but even with all the work that he is doing, there's still so much to be done. Um, so if there was anything that I could say to the board moving forward, it's creating a position or an internship that maybe encompasses something a little longer and gives a little bit more responsibility to the intern with that public outreach and communication, because Josh can't do everything under the sun all of the time, so if the intern, depending on their experience, or whether it's myself, that's something that is extremely needed. I mean, I've talked to people at various meetings, whether it's Chamber of Commerce meetings, community events, mid-coast partnership meetings, and it's baffling to me how many people may not even know that we have a lake here, as well as tourists coming in. They're like, "Oh, that's that big body of water as you're entering town." Yes, it is a lake. You can go on it. Um, so I think there's just a massive need for communication, not just between stakeholders and lake board members and people that are local, but also with tourists coming in and how we can implement that. So, moving forward for me, I've recently taken on the, taken on the role as a public information officer, so you guys saw the newsletter, so...
I did not see the newsletter, I apologize.
Okay, well...
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
When you said that the first one went out, I was like, "What?" So, is it on the website?
No, but I have a URL. I probably should put it on the website, though. Yeah. Oh, that is something I'd never get to say, though.
Sorry to interrupt you, Alex.
Yeah, I installed, I installed, it, it goes along with this, I installed a calendar, which is one more thing that Alex is going to be in charge of, so our board meetings, our events, everything's gonna be on the website under calendar at the top where it says home. Now, there's one that says calendar too, so a lot of things on it, so, sorry.
So, did that, did the, um, newsletter come out in constant contact?
It did.
Okay.
I just sent out a, uh, you know, an initial one, um, and I've already started getting some comments and feedback, uh, back, and any of that can be directed to me, offword, onto Alex too, and we'll incorporate into that, that into the, the next, uh, issue.
So, it, moving forward, that was the first one, but yeah, any feedback that I can get to improve it, or things that you liked, let Josh or myself know. But again, just taking on a little bit more responsibility with administrative side of things, because that is what I would like to be doing with my future. I love field work, and it's fantastic, but especially here on the coast, it is not consistent, um, just with our weather being the way that it is, so if I can be the person that is shaking hands, speaking with people in the community, doing that public outreach, that is really what I would like to be doing.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Of course.
Josh, you wanna fill us in, uh, where you were this past weekend also?
Oh, wow. You still haven't, you still haven't gotten tired of hearing me talk. Um, the district was invited to participate at the Waterfront Blues Festival with Explore Lincoln City. Um, I went up there for about, well, I went up there for three days during July fourth, and it was actually very good weather. Uh, I had a lot of quality conversations in the three days that I was there working with Lincoln City people. They have a great setup in, um, getting people to come to the booth, the shiny glass balls work really well. Um, so that being the fact, um, I had a lot of conversations with the, the people that we generally see that, that don't know there's a lake, that know about Lincoln City and the shiny glass balls and everything else, so it's great to get that connection to people. Um, I had just as many quality conversations with people from the community who were there visiting the festival. Um, I met a Realtor, our, our former planning director, I believe it was, Deborah Martin Nicholson, who were up there at the festival, um, just said hi to them real quick. Um, and just, uh, some people who, lots of people who lived around the lake, who had property, who'd been traveling here for years, uh, most of them, um, a few of them, as compared to a couple of years ago, knew more about the lake than if I were to talk to somebody or go on a bit like that when I first started managing the district. So, it was good to see that it's starting to get out, but there's still a, a fairly representative amount of folks that, um, need to know not only that there is a lake here, but the, um, the condition of the lake and everything right now in the city. Uh, so I think that's, that's gonna be a really valuable tool as we move forward with Lincoln City, and I've been speaking with their, um, public information officers and their, um, PR people as well, to see how we can integrate with them, um, a little more thoroughly, so that way we can maybe share in some of their marketing and advertising as well, so, um, they have some very good methods, um, outside of the shiny glass balls too. Um, they hire a lot of professionals to do things like write up brochures, write up newsletters, uh, just consult on these things, and even, you know, pay for, for marketing numbers and statistics and, and stuff that we, you know, there's absolutely no way we could even, um, begin to, to take ownership of, so...
Well, we were invited, uh, you know, that booth that, uh, the city had there to be invited, um, I think it's just terrific. We didn't have to pay anything and, uh, five thousand...
Yeah, the city pays, I think, five thousand dollars or more for the booth, and I think for passes.
So, asking us to be a partner in that and share our story, um, you know, I think it's great, and, uh, I'm with you, Josh, um, uh, we... And, uh, I'm with you, Josh. Um, uh, we should utilize that a little bit more, uh, 'cause I know the city is promoting the city, of course. And from an economic standpoint, the lake is pretty valuable to the city also, and we've never been in a lot of their printed, uh, literature or anything. And so, you know, I think you should explore it a little bit more, uh, you and Alex, and sit down with Ed and, and see what his vision is.
Sure.
As far as a partnership. Uh, that's what I would like you to do.
I can do that.
I think that partner, or the relationship that you've built with them is, is really great. And I think that probably now more than ever, they, they are recognizing that the lake has definite, definite benefits to the city, and, um, it's, it's interesting how some people literally don't acknowledge that we have a lake.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty incredible. I think that all the time when I go out there sampling, no matter if the weather's sunny or terrible to some people, um, it's still a absolutely gorgeous place to be in. So, like, that we should get the word out to, at least to select few people who are willing to come and visit us to be able to experience this place.
So, Josh, I have just one more thing, and that is, uh, a request for you to follow up with, uh, one of our local television news stations, but specifically Channel Eight, because they had, uh, a couple of years ago, been in town, and they did a report on the, uh, E. coli, or, I'm sorry, the, um...
Algae.
The algae bloom, the harmful algae bloom that was, uh, in, in existence at that time. But I think it's, um, a good time is now to, uh, refamiliarize, um, them with our board and our current progress that we've been making so that they can do a follow-up. They did a, uh, a live shot of the condition of the lake then, and it would be really beneficial, I think, to the district and to the city and the community is if they would come and do a follow-up and reiterate what they were, uh, reporting on in, in the past, and then bring this up, um, as, as what has happened or what has progressed since.
Very good idea. Very good idea.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
That was that, that would be, uh...
That was that toxic blue-green stuff that...
That would open up the door.
Well, that was the night that we had probably two hundred people in this room.
And they said they were gonna follow up on it, and they never have, I don't think.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, not a problem at all. I will give them a ring, and I'm, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to sit down and, and listen to the story.
Yeah, so going forward with that, um, if it does create a, um, you know, a positive momentum forward, that would just open the door for us to invite some of the state representatives down here so they could see it firsthand as well.
Absolutely, and, you know, I like the idea of getting going. I think once we get the ball rolling on all this stuff, we're gonna get even more notice. I've, the past couple of months alone, I've received calls from at least two other lakes, uh, one that's experiencing a cyanobacteria bloom right now at twenty-two hundred acres on the east coast. Um, going through the same things, we can read the same news article that happened, you know, four or five years ago here, the same two or three hundred people in a room looking for solutions and things like that. Um, this particular lake has always had a consultant follow them. Uh, Princeton Hydro are a very well-known consultant that does lake science, that's been monitoring their nitrates, and, uh, honestly, many of the things that we do in our monitoring program. Um, and the, the word that I've heard is they have suggested that aeration won't, you know, won't work for them. And I know that it can't be. There's not one fix-all for every one thing. There are a lot of variable factors. Um, but I hope that what we've done in at least moving forward on these projects and getting work done in water, uh, then following up on the science is, is going to open some doors for, for some people and, uh, hopefully continue improving our lake as well.
Well, and it just, I, the, I mean, I think the reason why, why we took so long for the aeration is it just seemed so cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we were looking at a million and a half dollars, I think, when we first started talking about it, and so, you know, I mean, we did it ninety percent cheaper than that?
I think it was, I think it was three to five million in the original estimate.
Anyhow, it, that, you know, I, and you have to wonder if, if those poor people are getting the same numbers.
Exactly.
And so, um, it's, it's pretty sad because, um, you know, we, we probably could've had this system in the lake three years ago.
Yeah. Well, and, and we still have options. Um, you know, we're monitoring, we're doing everything that's key, number one. Um, and all the conferences and all the, the current prevailing science, we're watching everything. We have been watching everything. We have put our system in. We're still watching it. Um, and, and beyond that, it's not like we're just waiting, like, "Oh, we hope it works. This is our only shot." We have backup plans.
Right.
And our system's modular. We can expand it. We can put in a secondary system. We're able to tell if any of those things are, are, are good options for us or not because of our monitoring program. So, we're in a really good spot.
Be a real key part of having a PIO. Um, I don't know if it, full-time is an option, but definitely a part-time position to assist with you so that you can stay focused on, uh, lake operations, and the PIO can go out and meet these people and, and get our information out there if, you know, if we're there to help or if we're there to, to share info to make their lake better, and it's just, uh, another feather in our hat, so...
Good stuff.
Sorry.
All right, I think with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. See you next month.